This time I call a meeting to order. Upper dedication.
Yes.
Lord, thank you for the day. Thank you for your strength. Thank you for wisdom and knowledge and direction, all the things that need to be decided today. Thank you for the rain. And for all for harvest time, Lord, for all farmers and the ranchers that are trying to bring it in. Well, bless the evening. We pray for your glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There changes to the agenda?
We do need to add an executive session for confidential business data. Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, this is a time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We would request that you please come to the podium, state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none. Moving on to our agenda, the minutes of the June 5th, 2024 meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2024.
Second?
To move by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hatch to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2024. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to appropriation ordinance number 11.
I move to approve appropriation ordinance number 11.
Second?
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve appropriation ordinance number 11. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the 2023 audit presentation.
Good evening. Neil Phillips with Jerry Gilmore and Phillips. Let's skip past the letter that's in there and dive straight into the audit report. Page one talks, or the first paragraph on page one talks about what we wanted, being the city of Concordia as of December 31st, verse 2023. The second paragraph talks about what they call an adverse opinion. In the state of Kansas, we are allowed to follow what they call the regulatory basis of accounting. It's got a slang term. It's called the Kansas cash basis and budget loss. Means you can't spend it if you don't have the money in the bank, and you can't spend it if you don't have public approval. That's basically the bottom line there. Third paragraph down there is actually the most important one. It says, it's titled, "An unmodified opinion on a regulatory basis of accounting", which what that means to you is based on the testing we did, we feel like you have a materially accurate representation of what happened during the year and how you ended the year without any further modification needed. Now, sometimes you'll hear the slang term, "A clean opinion", that's what you have here. The official term is an unmodified opinion, but you have a clean opinion on financial statements, meaning we believe they're materially correct based on the testing we did. The bottom of that page talks about the adverse opinion versus unmodified opinions. And the main difference there is when we're following the Kansas cash basis and budget laws, we don't record our infrastructure. So we don't record our capital assets and our, our gas line and our electric lines and water lines and all those things that are out there, the infrastructure, the roads, the streets. We don't capitalize it and then depreciate it out over its useful life, like a business would. The top of the next page talks about management's responsibilities and the fact that all the financial statements in here, all these numbers are yours. They're your representations of what happened with the city. And then the next couple paragraphs down there talks about the audit responsibilities and there are responsibilities with the numbers. The top of the next page talks about supplemental information. It's telling you that we did audit everything that's in the little blue book here. And then there's a very last paragraph there talks about prior year information, tells you that there are some comparative numbers in here, and it was an unmodified opinion in the prior year, and you could obtain a copy of that report out on the state website if you wanted to go out and look at those numbers in total. So page four and five is where we spend the majority of our time with every city that I deliver. This is statement number one. It is defined by Kansas statutes to say that is to show users at a glance that you're in compliance with the cash basis laws, meaning we can't spend the money if we don't have the, or we can't spend it or obligated if we don't have the money in the fund. Now, there is always an exception out there. You have a signed grant agreement, you have bond agreements, you have a loan agreement. You are allowed to go negative and waiting on reimbursement. You know, like those federal grants, they require you to spend the money, and then they're going to send you a reimbursement after you prove to them you paid those bills. So if you look at that fourth column over, if you glance down through there, if any of those would be negative, at first glance, it appears that we've got a violation of Kansas statute. But as you glance down through there, you're going to see it's the Capital Improvement Fund, in which we have some grants that are going on through that fund, in which they are, so it is allowable to go negative. And then the other negative one there that you've got is the Housing Authority Project. And which you know, we took that on with the grant agreement in place, waiting for reimbursement, so that is allowable under Kansas statutes. I always like this fund too, this statement also, because a lot of times the people in the city will, here we have $7.3 million, and they're wondering why we're not doing this, or we're not doing that. And this helps define where our monies can be spent. Like the very top line is the General Fund. You can see we started the year out with 1.5, almost $1.6 million, brought in 5.6, spent 5.4, so actually ended the year with $1.8 million of cash carryover. But then the next section, they call it special purpose funds, because those are monies that are brought in for a specific purpose. Like Special Highway, that's the third, or I guess it's the fourth line down. It started out the year with 200,000. We brought in 136, spent 100. That's $236,000 ending carryover cash or uncovered cash balance. I always give the example is every time somebody in the state of Kansas puts gas in their car, some gas tax goes to the state, and which then it comes back to us based on population. We can only spend that for streets and alleys. We cannot spend it if we have a water line break, we have another emergency that comes up. We can't spend it for that. Only streets and alleys. And so all of these special purpose funds, they help you define it with the title, but all of those are restricted funds. Then you've got your bond and interest funds, in which we've got money set aside to be able to make our bond payments. Then you've got your capital project funds. You can see there's the majority of our cash is sitting there. Like our water treatment facility project fund has $1.2 million in it. The St. Joseph subdivision project, the 1.2 million is sitting there. That's the bond proceeds that you issued during that last year. You've got the cash, and so the cash that's hidden there, you just haven't spent it for that project. Then the next section they listed out is, they call it business funds, because they want to make sure users of the financial statements understand that our utilities in the state of Kansas are considered businesses. There's actually a statute out there that says, once you pay all the bills of that utility fund, you can spend the money for anything you want. But we've got to have cash carryover in the state of Kansas, because we, you know, our infrastructure is getting older. We got to be able to replace some of that infrastructure, or have that cash for carryover, or for leveraging, you know, go out and get a grant. Sometimes they require a percentage match. So it's important that we do have cash carryover for our aging infrastructure that's out there. And then the very last page on the deck, or the last funds or last section there on the last page on page five is the trust funds, in which monies have been given to you, and it can only be used for a said purpose. You can see we add back encumbrances to get to a cash balance in the very last column, and then down there at the bottom of that page five shows you the reconciliation of the cash accounts that you have as a city, and how it reconciles back to those cash balances. Are there questions about that statement? Probably the most important one. But on number one, starting on page six, page six, seven, eight, and on to nine is summary of significant accounting policies. Those are talking about the accounting rules, what we call Kansas cash basis, when we count a receipt, when we count an expenditure. Talks about property taxes. It's got some budgetary information in there. We get to page nine, footnote number two, is where it starts talking about the information that's specific to you as a city. The first thing we talk about there is statute, Kansas statutes. We talk about the fact that you had two of those funds out there that were negative, but we're pointing out that this KSA 10-1116 says it's okay, because we did have signed grant agreements behind all both of those situations. But then schedule number one did show that you are in compliance with the budget laws. We'll go through that schedule here in just a minute. And then we're not aware of any other violations. The top of the next page, and most of the footnotes here back, talk about the rest of the numbers. We are limited in the state of Kansas about where and how we can invest our money. So we have $7.8 million out there in the bank. We can't go invest in the local stock market, or we can't, there's certain investments that we can do as a city. And so in the last paragraph down there, we talk about the fact that you had a $7.8 million book balance. It had a $7.8 million bank balance. Difference there between those two numbers would be outstanding checks, outstanding deposits. Of that money, $582,000 was covered by FDIC insurance, and then your other $7.2 million was covered with what they call securities pledge. As a city, we are required to go out and get what they call securities pledged at each of our banks. I give the example, it's like the mortgage of your house. The bank puts their name on your mortgage. They have no right to your house unless you stop making payments, in which they could go out and grab your house to recoup their funds. Well, the same things happened at the bank. They put your name on some investments at the bank level that you have no right to, unless the bank would fail, and then you could go out and grab your monies to recoup our monies as a city. So basically, we're a stepped up creditor with the bank, and we are required by statute to have that. Bottom of that page talks about a capital lease that we have out there. They changed the name to financing leases now. The next page, actually, I like that depiction of the lease better. That's all the long-term debt of the city. We've got our bonds, we've got our three bonds. You've got the temporary note that's out there, and then there's that financing lease with the fire department copier. You can see we started the year out with 6.4. We added those temporary loan lease or loan bond proceeds, $1.3 million, paid down principal by 372, so actually ended the year with $7.4 million of long-term debt. The next page shows the payout of all of those bonds and all those loans. You're going to see it's a five-year columns, the next five years, and then it's in five-year chunks after that. You know, most of your city planning is done in five-year phases. So you've got the next five years of principal and interest on each of those different bonds and loans. All right, I'm not going to sit and read each page to you. I do want to point out, actually, it is just the next page. Page 13 and 14 has your capers benefit. As you're reading through this, when you get to page 14, it's the second paragraph up or down on the capers. It talks about the state's unfunded portion of the capers plan. We are required to disclose your portion of that shortfall at the state level for capers and KPNF. As you can see there, it's a pretty large number. A lot of times that scares people. I want to make sure I pointed that out. We would hope that the state general fund would catch up, would step up and pay any of those shortfalls, but it is required that we disclose that. If we were doing GAAP financial statements, that actually shows up as an encumbrance or as a liability against the city. It restricts some of your fund balances, so. But as a K-MAG audit, it's only a footnote disclosure. All right, I'm going to have you flip a few pages back to page 18. Page 18 is what they call schedule number one. It's to show users at a glance that we're in compliance with the budget laws of the state of Kansas. This would be that public approval. You have your public hearing annually for the budget. You can see the general fund, we published a budget of $6,165,000. We had some budget credits, a reimbursement of expense counts as a budget credit. So you have a total budget, total budget for comparison of $6.6,182,000. We actually spent $5,404,000. So we were actually under our publicly approved budget by $759,000. And you've got all your different funds there. You can see the library fund, we always budget, and then we pay out what we get in with them. You can pay up to the amount that you've got budgeted. Industrial Development Fund, your Special Highway Fund, you can see we were under on it. We usually budget to spend all of those funds, but we only spent 100,000 of it. The next page starts in, and actually it's the rest of the document. It's the buy fund by line items. So like the very top line is your property taxes. They call it add-on property tax. And we put a prior year column in there for comparison. You can see in 2022, we collected $1,260,000 of property taxes from our citizens. In 2023, which is the middle column, we collected $1,173,000, but we had actually levied $1,202,000. So that $28,888 deficit right there is our citizens that did not pay their property taxes in 2023. So the hope is, on the next line down is delinquent taxes. So we hope that $28,000 that shows up in that variance column comes in in 2024 on that delinquent tax column or line item. But you've got all your lines. This follows the state budget format. So your line items, you may have, you have more detail in your internal financial statements, but it's summarized to match up with the budget format that you filed with the state. You file it with the county, and then it goes to the state. But like your expenditures over there on page 20, they're broke down between personnel services, contractual services, commodities, and capital outlay, and then by the different departments. So you can sit and actually look at each department to see how it fared with what the budget that you actually published was. I don't know that there's any one fund that we ought to point out. The numbers, as you see them here in the audit, are exactly how you seen them prior. I am happy to say that we did not have any audit adjustments this year, which is a positive. We don't have very many cities that can do that. So with that being said, let's flip back to that letter, unless there is a particular fund you would like to talk about. The separate letter that's in there, they call it a letter to those charged governments. So it's really in your packets, it's in management's packets, but if we have copies that go out to the public, most generally, this letter doesn't go out to the public. Our granters a lot of times have started asking for it, which we go ahead and give it to them, because they're going to give us some money. So we'll be glad to give it to them. But it is talking about significant audit matters, difficulties encountered, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, disagreements with management. I'm kind of making light of it, because it is a boilerplate letter, because we didn't have any of those kind of issues that needed to be discussed. But it is important that you do read through it, because the first couple pages there have got a lot of important information. Then the third page back is what they call the management representation letter. I often refer to it as the reminder letter, because as management reads through it, they should have talked to you about everything that was in that letter. You're going to read through it, because it's boilerplate. You're going to see there wasn't any material conflicts of interest, no problems with the IRS, no problems with any lawsuits, or there's four pages of representations there. So you can see I'm kind of making light of that. But as management reads through it, if any of those things weren't applicable, they would need to then pick up the phone and say, wait a minute, I forgot to tell you about that material conflict of interest, or that material lawsuit, or so on and so forth. But there is four pages of representations that are made there. But we are required to now give you a copy of that, so you can see what representations have been made between the auditors and management. Kind of a quick presentation. Questions? I think, I think things went really well this year. We had the question come up about our staffing, and we did hear, you've seen my face for a few years, because I come into the presentation. But we do have some staff rotation. And we had three new auditors with new eyes here this year. I brought three new staff people to set them, or staff, to look at your records. So we did have some rotation there, and and actually, things got looked at a little bit different, I think, this year. Do you feel like that? Yeah. You know, sometimes a different set of eyes sometimes makes you look at things a little bit different, so. But we did have a little bit of rotation there, but staff still does an excellent job. We were actually able to discount the bill again this year and come in under the contracted amount, so. And that, that's just a testament to staff. The no adjustments is too.
We appreciate what you do, and then even having fresh eyes on it is probably a good thing, too. So.
Thank you.
I would move to accept the audit and authorize the mayor to sign a management representation letter.
Move by Commissioner, say like Commissioner Hatch to accept the audit and authorize the mayor to sign the management representation letter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm going to, I worked that out. You guys have your meetings on the same night. You guys, 5:30 to 7:00, it works out perfect.
Big troubles.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got an airport advisory board appointments. Permission. The Concordia Airport Advisory Board has two positions with terms that expired July 1st, 2024. That would be Steve Richard and Jason Rorick. Public notice was placed and laid May 2nd, 2024, advertising these board positions. Two expressions of interest forms were received, both from Jason Rorick and Steve Richard, both residents of Cobb County. Jason is a resident of Glasgow and currently serves as the board of, board vice chairman, and Steve Richards is the current, current chair of work. So I recommend that we reappoint Jason and Steve to the airport advisory board.
I move to reappoint Jason Rorick and Steve Richard to the airport advisory board.
Move by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to reappoint Jason Rorick and Steve Richards to the airport advisory board. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the managers' reports.
I just want to thank Amber for her work of assembling things for the auditor, and to thank all the department heads for their work of managing their budgets. Well, we can't do that without a huge effort on their part to do a good job. So thank you for that. Want to mention and remind the public, as well as our officials here, as you get questions from the public, that for our Fourth of July celebrations, we do allow fireworks sales in the community, and we do allow folks to discharge those fireworks in the community when everybody to work with that safely. There are some dates that are very important for everybody to remember. The sale and discharge of fireworks is only allowed in Concordia from July 1 to through July 4th, 11:59, 59 PM is the last point in time where you can light off your last firework. So it's also important to note that July 3rd is the Concordia Fireworks Show out on the fairgrounds, and Dan Highs is spending here visiting with you about that, and is accepting donations to help out with that show. And then June 29th is when the Jamestown fireworks and celebrations are going to be. So folks have two opportunities to see great big shows, and then to set those off here in town. So ask everybody to be safe. Let's go for no finger injuries this year. So that'd be great. We also recently found out that we were awarded a K dot community chargers pilot program for EV charger, charging stations downtown. Recall that we'd applied, I think, twice for the community facilities chargers, so the ones just for community facilities, the ones for the Volkswagen settlements since 2021. We did not receive either one of those. K dot reps called us and said, we really want you to have chargers in Concordia. We know that the boards are putting in chargers with their car wash right along 81, but K dot also sees value in us having some of the slower chargers downtown. So the fast ones there at the car wash, and then the next level, level two chargers downtown, so people can stop and stay a while, go out to a restaurant, go see a show at the Brown Grand or the movie theater, the Plaza, and then come back. So we were awarded $175,000 in federal funds. It does require a $43,000 local match. So we're working with K dot to get that paperwork. We'll bring that agreement back to you with a lot more details about how that project could work. We'll bring that back to you at the next meeting for your consideration. If you choose at that time that you don't want to proceed, we don't have to, but if you want to, you'll have that information at that time. Update on our housing project at St. Joe. We are, the rains are, have slowed our earthwork down, but they've also caused us some erosion control issues. So I know Shane and I are in constant contact with Jason Johnson and Campbell and Johnson, as well as votes partner, to try to make sure that those erosion control measures are in place, are enhanced, to keep the salt from running off into the streets and onto neighboring properties. We are in the very messy part of this project. It's likened to, as you're preparing Thanksgiving dinner, and your kitchen is a complete disaster right before you put the food on the serving platter and clean things up before your guests arrive. That's the spot that we're at right now. So within the next couple of weeks, we should see a lot of cleanup starting to occur. Earthwork completion, curb and gutter starting to, to get into place, and us starting to work our way out of that messiness of that project. But if you get questions or comments, feel free to have them. Call one of us. We'll be happy to talk through details and to see if there's some things that we need to do. Any complaints that we have received, we are working with the contractor to address those in a timely manner. Tomorrow, we travel to Wichita for KCM Summer Summit. So this is Wichita State University professors, as well as some professionals giving up a giving role at some relevant talks to other city managers from across the state. It's usually really, really good. Jam packed education time in about five hours with the timeframe. So it's really, really good. Next Tuesday, I believe it's next Tuesday, the 25th at noon at the Chamber is lunch and learn, putting on my hobby, mental health, and they're sharing different things that they're doing in the area to provide additional services to our residents. If you're interested in attending, let me know. There is an R S M P required. They are providing lunch. But that's June 25th at noon at the Chamber. And that's all that I have. Happy answering questions, you guys.
At one time, you were thinking that we would have chargers down by the Brown Grand. Is that kind of what you're looking at?
Yes, that's, that's the same location that this grant would go for. So we already have the area designated for a potential transformer down there, and the area where the two yellow conduits are sticking up out of the ground, closest to Sixth Street, would be the stalls that would be designated for those EV chargers. It does create a different look in that area, but that's where the folks that we've been visiting with, both for the EV charging companies and K dot, had said they want them closest to the street, close to that area. It also helps us out with the access to those chargers, as well as ADA access to spots to get to the facilities downtown.
Staff reports.
I was just going to ask for the July 17th budget meeting. I think we had said to do it at the study session after, so for the second budget meeting. Can we make that 3:00 PM? Because we maybe want to bring the water rate issue up, and that will take a little bit longer. 3:00 PM work.
Which day have you said? It's the 17th of July?
Yes.
The first study session is scheduled for 3:00 on the 15th, and then we talked about the one on the 17th being after the 5:30 city commission meeting, so the study. So 3:00. I could do 11 to 2. I can't. Just want to keep it after. And this is after still work for everyone, or it might be a little longer. And we can work to try to keep the rest of the agenda a little bit shorter.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can make. I don't have, I can make it work earlier.
I'll just leave it.
Just leave it the way it is then?
Yeah, after the meeting.
One thing. I had one found with another part mower, where the engine has blown. So we're coming to you with another purchase approval request for another mower. So this is actually the oldest mower that we do have. It's got over, I think, 1,100 hours with that. Hope I'll have that next meeting. I have noticed quite a bit of grass clippings out. It's one of our citizens to try to keep the grass clippings back in the yard. It's really clogging up the drains. That's it.
Sounds like we've heard it on every summer, so it would be nice.
Sounds like we've heard it on every summer, so it would be nice.
Yeah, I know we've done social media pushes, I don't, I don't know that they make a difference, but it probably would be good to. Increase ordinance fees, fines.
Have we ever fined anybody for that?
I don't believe that we have. We did get some tickets prepared and it's been a challenge to figure out exactly how you enforce it. Because unless you catch somebody doing it, you could have a property owner to hire somebody. So do you ticket the person that was mowing or the property owner? Or the tenant if it's a rental. It's, I think that that's kind of where our hangup mostly comes in is that once we actually see it happen, it's very, very good to call, you know?
Yeah.
So, but we can put, put another push and ask people to help us keep our storm sewers clean. And a benefit to keeping the storm sewers clean is that then the water doesn't back up, especially with the heavy rains that we've experienced this year. I think we all understand the importance of making sure those storm sewers are kept very, very clear, so hopefully people will help us out.
Is there a way to more firmly establish responsibility in that?
We went for that a lot. And it, it's difficult because then there does reach a point where we have to start looking at. Rental agreements and who's responsible for it and if the tenant is responsible for it. So what we were trying to do was if, at one point in time, if we had received a complaint, we were trying to kind of keep an eye on when those people would be mowing it. To be perfectly honest with you, a lot of the times the problem, at least I've been seeing, is maybe those places that don't mow all that often. And then they don't care much to begin with and so they just blast it all out of the yard or into the street, so. That was even the difficult thing because most of the time, I think, a lot of the problems we were first looking at are rentals a lot of the time. So then, yeah, we don't know if it's a landscaping company, somebody being hired to mow, what it was. Terribly. It got complicated, but.
I think, I, I think our landscaping companies, when they do it, they're usually probably bad.
Oh, yeah.
They're doing well, it's, it's.
They've just been an issue, yeah.
It's, it's.
Interesting that.
Why they're not said that.
People involved on time.
Another landscape company I use doesn't want a job making sure that it doesn't go out into the street, so. But me residentially, we contract out for our machine.
Oh, gotcha.
I do a good job of pulling a desk.
You too.
We can make a push and ask people for help. We can go back and we can take a look at that enforcement again to see if it's reading. See how they can make sure that it's fair and equitable for everybody enforcing it.
I think that any, any social media effort or any kind of media effort, not just, we're friends in the traditional media senses. Preaching to the choir, but maybe not only that this is the way it needs to be, but some of the why behind it. I mean, I don't know that it would change, if it changed one mind, maybe it's great, but this is why. We're not just trying to be picky about it, this actually does have a. Impact.
We had addressed the last time as well, I don't get the drain issue, but. Yeah, that stuff gets slick, so people riding bicycles or motorcycles, that actually could cause them to slip. Which potentially can be a liable issue for the whole month of period.
I'm sorry, is, is there, there's an ordinance on the record for this? Okay.
Yeah.
Other staff reports? Commissioner comments?
Well, it's that awkward time of year where we tell Amber how right she is for her auditing skill or her skills at finance. And so really appreciated it, having a clean audit and that's awesome. So thank you, thank you staff, your hard work.
I remember what, earlier in my role of the commission, I remember being interviewed by the auditor to gauge, you know, kind of commission perspective. And yes, I did a good enough job, we've done a good enough job to not be asked to interview again. But I think that really just speaks to the quality of the books, so, yes.
You didn't talk to anybody?
Yeah, they used to, I think, have like a pretty significant interview, I think, even having fresh set of eyes, the books just.
Do they do that anymore? He doesn't talk, he doesn't talk to you anymore?
I'm not missing the conversation. I honestly would be the first, and maybe he just remembers me saying, I'm not the guy you need to be talking to.
He talks to Amy.
She would be somebody who would be more, I think that just about anybody up here would be a better person to talk to than me. If somebody tells me this is making sense, then I, I trust people. I can't act very well, so do gauge people pretty well, so thank you for your, your job.
I would echo that too, but I don't have anything else.
And I feel the same way. It's nice to have the auditor come and say everything, so hey, you don't have to worry about it. Thank you for your expertise and the whole staff, appreciate it.
I heard a couple, a couple of comments last night, the nets look good.
Yeah.
Make the field look bigger, like it was weird, it's, it's anything, but it's a blue different look, that looks good. At this time I would entertain a motion to recess the executive session.
City Commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data or trade secrets of a business. KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B four with Amy Lang and the tenants. They reconvene in the city commission chamber at six twenty one P M.
So, move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz, the city commission recess into executive session to discuss confidential business data, trade secrets of a business. KSA seventy five forty three nineteen B four with Amy Lang and the tenants and reconvene at the commission chamber at six twenty one P M. During a further discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes.
He was. You burned your house down.
Nope, clearly not.
No action.
You did.
I know, no action was taken, but at this time I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session for the aforementioned reason. For period of ten minutes.
Seven?
Move by Commissioner Wentz, second by Commissioner Hatch. Recess into executive session for the aforementioned reason, is there any further discussion here? No, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign.
I said I was going to zip my lips.
I'm not going to say it. At this point I would entertain a motion for, no action was taken. At this point I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to adjourn, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion passes.